Good evening, welcome to the May 3rd, 2022, uh, meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners at 6:00 PM. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
This time I'll recognize Jason Falls. Jason is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and invocation.
allegiance to the black of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Father, we publicly come to you tonight thanking you for the opportunity for us to gather here tonight. We ask for you to watch over each person in attendance. And we ask for those people that are going to be taking a part in this, this meeting tonight. Just guide, guide them and direct them in what they say and what they do. And, um, thank you for all that you've given to us. Amen.
Next, I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize any elected officials that we have with us tonight.
Sheriff Martin of County State. Janet Gerald, Mayor of County State.
Welcome. Anyone else? All right, next, we'd like to take the opportunity to recognize any veterans that we have with us tonight.
Jason Falls, United States of America.
Johnny Otten, US Army.
Next, we'd like to recognize any law enforcement members that we have with us tonight.
And Alford, County Sheriff's Office.
Next, we would like to recognize any county department heads present tonight.
Jerry Bell, Assistant County Director.
Martha Thompson, Chief Deputy County Attorney.
Chris Warren, Department of Public Affairs.
Allison Mudd, Community Resource Officer.
Phil Farnington, Building Inspection Department.
Jason Falls, Building, uh, District of Public Health.
Sherri Latt, Department of Taxing and Government.
Lita Jackson, Department of Labor.
Lita Jackson, Department of Labor.
Freddie Davis, Department of Emergency Emergency.
I'm McGee, Department of Emergency.
Jimmy, Department of Health.
Deborah, Department of Health.
All right, Commissioners, next, before you have a motion, is the agenda proposed, the agenda? Are there any amendments or additions to the agenda, or if not, will indicate a motion to approve as presented?
I'd like to make an amendment that we add, um, our county manager, Brian Epley, to do a presentation on the Shelby convenience item.
All right, we'll add that, so let's do that after the building inspection update. So I guess it'll be seven eight. Any other amendments or additions to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve as amended?
Send me.
One second.
All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. Next on the agenda is a special recognition. Madam Clerk, North Carolina Governor's Volunteer Service Award.
Good evening, Board. We're excited to be here this evening to recognize the 2022 Governor's Volunteer Service Award recipients from Cleveland County. The Governor's Volunteer Service Awards Program was created by the Office of the Governor in 1979 to recognize North Carolinians' most dedicated volunteers. Through the years, the award has been bestowed on thousands of North Carolinians who have shown concern, compassion, and engagement for their neighbors by volunteering in their local communities. This year was no different. Cleveland County is proud to recognize the three recipients of the 2022 North Carolina Governor's Volunteer Service Award. At this time, I'd like to call Mark Hudson to the front to introduce our first recipients.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm just going to make a couple of comments in doing this. I don't know, Brian, are you going to be commenting on the award, or do you just want me to do that? Okay, um, I'm going to just start out by saying, "To be and not to seem." That's our state motto. It's a great state motto. I haven't encountered anything, anywhere, that is as inspiring as that. We were reached out to by Phyllis Knoll, and I'm sure many people were, to think about people who kind of lived up to that motto in terms of volunteerism. And you saw that we had several thousand people, or it's a hundred people, so nominated and got this award. If you think about our state, we have about 10 million or so people living in the state. In Cleveland County, we've got 98,000 or so. And if you think about volunteers in our community, I bet you'd be shocked to know how many we truly have, because we don't know how many we truly have. But if you think about it, teachers, aides, uh, we've got coaches for Little League, we've got scout people, we've got people in the churches, we've got volunteers on all of our not-for-profit boards. The county has a lot of boards with volunteers. The people in attendance here tonight, who aren't county employees, are volunteers, because they're watching government work and making sure it works. So with all these volunteers, how do we pick one that's worthy of this award? And we, there were three of us that were working on this particular nomination, and we had several names that we thought were worthy. One came to the forefront. If you think about our library, if you think about the Broad River Greenway, and you think about Destination Cleveland County, the Earl's Quirk Center, and Don Gibson Theater, think about how many citizens in our county are touched and enriched by that. Not just culturally, not just socially, not just artistically, but our county as a whole is also economically impacted by those functions. And one name came up that was associated with all those and in its, their evolution over time, and that's Brownie Plaster. Brownie has been a long-term servant of our community and our county, and she never seeks recognition, and she fussed at us when she found out she was an award winner. Payback is going to be terrible, I tell you. But if you think about this, one of the things that sets Brownie apart from all the other people that we looked at, and there were really, really worthy people that we had on our list. So you know there's just dozens, if not hundreds, of people in this county that are worthy of the recognition. But Brownie has always inspired us to not just be where we are, but to look ahead at to what we've become. And each of these three things I've mentioned, if you think about how they have evolved over the last 20 or 30 years, it's really incredible. And she's always pushing. And what worries me most about her winning this award is, what is she thinking about next? And should I change her phone number and email address? So, Brownie, it's my pleasure to recognize you publicly for good deeds and caring for our community and the people in it. Thank you.
Well, wanted to take the picture, just a correction, he said 98,000, we broke 100,000, what? We're one of four counties in the state that did.
In the country.
Yeah.
But anyway, I just want to say that, um, it's my honor to receive this award. I'm embarrassed to receive it, because I've worked with hundreds of people across this wonderful county over the years. I have friends in Kings Mountain, Kingstown, Kazer, Earl, Bowlin Springs, Shelby, Popeful, Lamore, just name it, through historic preservation, Chris, we, we went to every city council meeting several years ago. Wonderful people in this county. So I accept it for all the wonderful volunteers that I've had the blessing to work with over the years. Thank you very much.
One last thing, and we're sorry, it's my anniversary, I'm cooking dinner, and I've got to go. These two have another meeting that they're complicated with, so we, we grab and dash. Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to call Ms. Sharon Bishop to the front to introduce the next recipient, the Kingstown Community Organization for Citizen Concerns.
I certainly want to give honor to the Commission Board and thank every one of you for all you do for Cleveland County. I am the president of the Kingston Community Organization for Concerned Citizens. But our mayor, Janet Gerald, she is the one that nominated us. We didn't know we had to have a prepared speech, so I'm catching her off guard, but I'm going to ask her to come up and speak about the things that we have done in the town of Kingstown. And while I'm standing, I want to thank Phyllis for sending me the email and, um, but I'll turn it over to the hands of our mayor, Janet Gerald.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. And it is my pleasure and my honor to be here to, uh, for this presentation, for, for this wonderful group of volunteers. Kingstown would not be the town that it is without this group of individuals right here. And it's not just limited to Kingstown. They volunteer all over the county. Now, take a look at them. Most of them are older than I am, and that's saying something. But you talk about a get-to-it-and-do-it group of individuals. You couldn't find, um, a better group to have on your side volunteering. Every month, they have at least one volunteer activity. They serve the senior citizens of our town. Uh, they prepare, uh, give them a prepared meal. Just presented everyone, all the seniors in the town, with a bowl of fruit. So it's not just busy work, they're doing productive things. And these are hands-on activities. They go door to door and meet every one of our citizens in the town. And, and I couldn't be more proud of the efforts that they've put in. They presented, um, baskets, uh, to the sheriff department, to the nurses, to the hospital staff. And so, and it just goes on. Every opportunity they can find, they take advantage of it to help someone in the town and/or the community. And I'm very pleased and proud to have, um, suggested or nominated them for this award, and even more proud that they have been recognized and received it. So thank you very much. Now back to you, Ms. Martin.
Ms. Martin, if you want to have a...
Yes, I'm going to ask the KPLC, please, stand and back forward.
Our final recipient received the Volunteer Medallion Award. The prestigious Governor's Medallion Award for Volunteer Service was implemented in 2006 to recognize the state's top 20 to 25 volunteers. A statewide panel reviews and evaluates all of these nominations to determine the award recipient. Medallion Award recipients are honored at an annual recognition ceremony, which was held virtually this year. At this time, I'd like to call Ms. Pat Farley up, one of our previous medallion winners, to present this prestigious award.
I want to tell y'all that I, I'm honored to be here, and first of all, my name is Pat Farley, and I work with North Carolina Extinction, and I cook meals for these guys every once in a while. But I was the recipient two years ago, and for my volunteerism, and it was quite an honor. And when they told me that my friend, Glenn Ashbrook, was Red Cross, was a winner, I go, huh, he does 10 times more than I do. All of y'all know what Red Cross does for our county. Harry can tell you more about it than I do, but they answer all the fire calls. Glenn has worked, I've known him now for about 10 years, and he does 24/7, all the time. They answer all of the fire calls, there's a lot, he does a lot of the food distribution. He works out at Presbyterian Church and does food distribution three days a week. And he probably puts in 60 or better hours a week for his volunteerism. And if it had not been for Glenn running Red Cross, when all the transition took place for Cleveland County, we would not have a Red Cross, and I want to thank him.
Thank you, congratulations.
I wanted to let everyone know that towards the end of the year is when we begin to start soliciting for nominations for our volunteers, so if you know of anybody, have an organization in mind, go ahead and email me now, I can add you to the list, so we can get it done. We'd love to recognize all the volunteers and what they do for our county.
All right, next item on the agenda is a special presentation. At this time, I'll recognize Commissioner Riley Whitstein for the Motorcycle Awareness Month 2022.
Every, every spring, we, we've done this, as long as I've been a commissioner, and I don't have any years before that. But in the springtime, you'll start seeing more and more motorcycles, although I, I'm seeing them all year round, even, even in when it's too, too cold for me to want to get out and go somewhere in a car, they'll be out on their motorcycles. But, uh, one of the things that I feel like that is a really, um, strong point we need to make here is in the springtime, when the grass starts growing and the leaves are all shedding, all their fuzzies, and people don't realize how dangerous that is for motorcyclists on the highway, especially if they get into a curve. If you blow your grass clippings on the road, that could cause someone to have an injury, an injury. And most of the time, when these bikes go down, they usually wind up on top of you, not, you're not on top of it when it's all over. So, uh, that's one of the reasons I feel so strongly that we need to continue to make May every year Motorcycle Awareness Month. So tonight, we have, um, Haley Wilson and a group from, from their club here tonight, and I'd like to, um, present them with an award, and we'll have them come forward.
Motorcycle Awareness Month 2022. Whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of people across the state and nation, and whereas motorcycles are a common and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption, road wear, and contributes in a significant way in the relief of traffic and parking congestion. And whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration and the Motorcycle Safety Foundation have named May Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. It's important for the citizens of Cleveland County to be aware of motorcycles on our roads and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And whereas safe motorcycle operation is enhanced through a combination of rider training and experience, good judgment, and observance of traffic laws, states and motorcycle organizations across this country will be conducting a variety of activities to promote the importance of motorists' awareness and safety sharing the road with motorcycles. And whereas Cleveland County Commissioners encourage all operators of automobiles, trucks, and motorcycles to be conscientious of their respective responsibility on the roads in our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners proclaim May 2022 as Motorcycle Awareness Month and ask all citizens to join in the effort to keep Cleveland County's roads safe for all. Adopted this the third day of May 2022.
While he's sitting down, I probably rode a motorcycle for more years than most of them born. I started riding in 63. My son-in-law, Murphy, this will be his 28th year for the Murphy Scooter Shed Toy Run. He provides toys for the Fontana Hospital, the Oxford Orphanage, for the Sheriff's Department, Kingstown PD, Shelby PD, so it's coming up in, uh, thanks given to be his 28th year, and the thing started with seven motorcycles, and I think Murphy owned four of the, the seven that we rode that year, so. We've been riding for many years, and we appreciate everything you guys do out there.
Thank you all. Next, we have a second special presentation tonight, and this will be for School Nurse Day 2022. Heather Voss.
All right, good evening. Thank y'all for taking the opportunity to recognize the school nurses. In the past couple of years, they've worked tremendously hard with COVID, and so we appreciate the recognition, recognition that you're giving them, and it's an honor to accept that on their behalf, um, tonight, so thank you very much.
Okay, School Nurse Day 2022. Whereas students are the future, and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow. Families deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for when they are at school. And whereas all students have a right to have their physical and mental health needs safely met while in the school setting. Students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school. The COVID-19 pandemic has emphasized the essential role school nurses play in student health and academic success. And whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and in ensuring students' academic success for more than 100 years, they address the home and community factors that impact students' health, acts as a liaison to the school community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of the children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children. And whereas school nurses support the health and educational services of children and youth by providing access to care when children's cognitive development is at its peak. They are members of school-based teams to address the school population. School nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims Wednesday, May 11, 2022, a School Nurse Day in Cleveland County, celebrating the accomplishments of school nurses and asking all citizens to join in the observation. Adopted this the third day of May 2022.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is citizen recognition. Madam Clerk, will anybody sign up?
No, sir. No one signed up.
Who signed up? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Brian?
Thank you, Commissioner Gordon. Several items for consideration this evening. Uh, fairly short consent agenda. We'll start with item A, which are minutes. Uh, there are two sets of minutes in your package for consideration, April the 5th and April the 19th, both regular commissioner meeting, uh, minutes. Item B is Budget Amendment Number 55 on the year from the Public Health Department. This is a request to budget, uh, $101,417 in additional COVID-19 relief funds. Uh, those are flowing through Partners Behavioral Health, uh, which is our local LME, MCO, and it'll be used to help offset youths, um, and apparent education, uh, specific substance abuse, specifically budgeted for advertising and educational expenses in that function. Item C is Budget Amendment Number 56 on the year from the Department of Social Services. Request to budget $62,332. Uh, these are one-time additional LEAP funds, uh, as a supplement for folks who received it in the 2122 year, and it would be a flat $224 per household, uh, a lot. Item D is from our Planning Department. This is a request to set a public hearing for Tuesday, June the 7th, uh, case 22-13 for parcel number 47196, and the petitioner is requesting to rezone from restricted residential to residential. And again, we're asking to set that public hearing for Tuesday, June the 7th. Between now and then, obviously, we'd go to the planning board, uh, come before that public hearing. Item E from the Finance Department is our upcoming 2022 audit contract. Statistically required to be presented to the board commissioners on an annual basis. Uh, the contract is a flat fee from the prior year, with the recommended firm still being Thompson, Price, Scott &amp; Adams, as we've been with that firm now for a few years, and the relationship is terrific. Item F from our Legal Department, uh, this is a request for a land transfer, parcel 06406, or excuse me, 60406. Uh, this is, uh, property owned by the county out 831 North Post Road, and the request is to approve transfer title from the county to Cleveland Community College effective July 1st of 2022 at no cost. Item G from Tax Administration, uh, request to, uh, consider a resolution that would allow, uh, the county line that borders Burke County to be surveyed, uh, really evaluated
to general business conditional use for a wedding, event, venue, and campground. Chris?
Thank you, board, and good evening. Tonight, I've only got one item for you as opposed to the three or four normally, but we have a request for a map amendment. The petitioner is Jay and Kelly Little, and they're representing a Little Southern State LLC, and they're requesting to change the zoning of a 12 and 1/2 acre parcel that they own from residential manufactured homes and parks to general business conditional use. The property is located along Jim Patterson Road, just off Dixon School Road between the Grover and Kings Mountain area, the southeast part of the county. Previous use of the property consists of multiple manufactured homes. They've been removed from the property, and Mr. and Ms. Little would like to use the property as shown in the site plan that you see. They'd like to use the property for a wedding venue and then also construct four cabins on the property to support that use of a wedding venue. The character of this area, Jim Patterson Road, you're going to find mostly residential throughout this area. It is located just south of Interstate 85 and the highway battleground avenue between Kings Mountain and Grover. It does dead end, so there's no access to those two highways. The only access is off Dixon School Road. Zoning districts in that area are residential-type districts. You'll find the manufactured homes and parks district and the residential zoning district. And then the land use plan in that area designates this area, this corridor, as our primary growth area. We have presented this petition to the planning board, and they voted to approve. They noted that it was consistent with the land use plan, and these uses would be higher impact than typical residential development, and that designation does allow for high-impact uses, and they felt like the proposed site plan would be compatible with those surrounding neighborhood. And I can answer any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Chris before we do the public hearing? Thank you, Chris. Stand by. All right, this time we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against Planning Department case 22-11, request to rezone property at 132 Jim Patterson Road from residential manufactured homes and parks to general business conditional use for a wedding, event, venue, and campground, please come forward and state your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak for or against Planning Department case 22-11, request to rezone property at 132 to general business conditional use for a wedding, event, venue, and campground, please come forward and state your name and address. Send the one to speak. We'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions or discussion on the proposed change? If there are none, I'll ask for a motion to approve or deny the Planning Department case 22-11.
I'll make a motion. We approve it.
I'll say.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We're moving on now to the regular agenda. We'll recognize Colt Farrington with the building inspection update.
Thank you to the board, and particularly to the manager's office for inviting me to come and present to you tonight what's been going on in the building inspection department, how it relates to our permits, and how that may be a reflection of, or is actually a reflection of, growth in our community. I also want to take a moment to publicly thank our permitting technicians who helped me compile this data, and to Aaron Goss, our marketing and communications director, who took a very amateurish PowerPoint that I put together and punched it up and made it look way more professional than I really am, and he did a great job, and I appreciate his help on this in particular. So in 2021, our permit totals for commercial development in particular, we issued 44 new commercial permits. Now, that is of wide variety, as you can imagine, of buildings. That represents two different phases of the modular units at the Two Kings Casino, which is now at a total of, what was it, 44, about 44,000 square feet of gaming space there. We had one of those permits was 33,000 square foot addition to Unique Tech in the Grover area, the plant there. Couple of these were new family life buildings for our area churches, and at least two were dog grooming businesses that became rural occupation, occupational buildings, essentially in people's backyard under COVID. So how that reflects on our trends is completely steady. In the last five years, we've averaged 45 commercial building permits. Last year, we issued 44. It's completely on trend for what we've come to expect. Now, on the residential side, we issued 182 residential permits. That's new buildings, new houses, and detached garages, accessory structures to those houses. That is a substantial difference from what we've been doing lately. The four-year average before that was 118 permits per year. We did 182 last year. That represents a 54% increase over the previous four years. The total permits issued, all work permitted out of our office on the building inspection side, 1,731 total permits. This bar graph here represents that as well as the environmental health permits you'll notice in brown. And basically, all those other colors are those permits broken down into the different areas they are. Are they commercial? Are they mobile homes? Is it an electrical service change? Is it a mechanical change out waterline, whatever it may be? You stack all those blocks up, they turn into your totals for the end of the year that you see in gray. And when I was looking at this, I went, well, that doesn't really feel right because it doesn't feel like we're steady. It feels like we're pretty busy. And I got to looking and realized how high our electrical permits. I just want to point that out to your attention for 2017 and 2018. You'll notice in that light blue, those are electrical permits, and they fall off dramatically. They're in the 900 range. For 17 and 18, they fall off back to the steady 400 range for service changes, electrical work. What these were, were Duke Power was switching over to those digital meters that you've probably all got at your houses now. Now, some of the old equipment, some of our more established neighborhoods would not accept those meters, so Duke Power hired a third-party agency, UPA, to come in and do all those service changes, and we permitted that work because we were required to inspect it. Now, we were able, those were not time-sensitive inspections. On a busy day, we didn't have to do any of them, and we were able to come back to them on a lighter day and catch back up. So that's the reason it didn't really feel like, even though those lines look pretty steady, those are one-stop inspections, whereas these other increases, like that residential, for example, we're going to come out to a new house six, eight times at least. So that's not, doesn't really tell the whole picture there. This graph, I think, is just a little misleading, and I wanted to point that out to you. And I was really tempted to just quit right here, because all this is true. Growth is, residential growth is high. Everything is steady and in an increasing fashion, but I don't feel like it really tells the whole story of what's been going on in our community, you know, on the building inspection side, because when I'm out in the community, people often ask me questions like, y'all been busy? You know? Yeah. Y'all still issuing a lot of permits? You still doing a lot of inspections? You know, building still strong? Yeah, it is. And I don't think they're that interested in how many permits we're issuing. I think what they're asking us is, everything's booming, are you seeing it slow down yet? And that's why I tell you that I believe, my belief is that the building community, all the indicators are strong, but there's some cautious optimism in that building community because our builders came through the boom of '05 through '07, and then through the recession of 2010 when the spigot just got cut off. And, you know, what they're seeing now is a lot of boom, and everybody's just kind of cautiously optimistic about where we're headed. So I'm going to show you another graph here. I was trying to figure out, because we hear how much more expensive it is to build a house, how much more expensive it is to build anything. And I got this graph from the International Code Council. It's their building valuation data chart. Now, our staff only uses this when we're figuring commercial permit fees because our permit fee schedule is directly related to the value of that building on the commercial side, not square footage necessarily. So to explain this graph to you, the column on the left-hand side, that is, what are we doing with the building? It could be, I mean, it's self-explanatory, all the way down. Across the top, when you see that 1A, 1B, all the way out to 5B, that is, how are we going to build the building? Now, I'll direct you to the R3 line where it says residential 1-2 family dwelling, about six up from the bottom. If you go all the way out to 5B, that would represent any material permitted by the code, not protected, essentially not sprinkled. That's your average house. And the current ICC latest numbers, February of 2022, says that on average, it costs $150 and 87 square foot to build a house. I'll be honest with you, I don't know what that looks like. I got into construction professionally, right out of college in 1998. I came to work here in 2001, and shortly thereafter, got married, and we bought our first house, Little Farmhouse. We paid 40 cents, $40 a square foot for that house. We remodeled it, had our first baby, worked on it a little long, sold it three or four years later for about $60 a square foot. Fast forward a couple of years, my wife and I took a piece of notebook paper, and we drew out a house plan that we could build, and we built it ourselves, saved all the money we could in 2007 for $75 a square foot. We got through the recession, sold it when the market was recovering, but it was still pretty beat up in 2013. We sold, we built it for 75, we sold it for about $90 a square foot. And I'm sitting here going, $150 a square foot for the average house? I don't know what that looks like. Well, I went back to our five-year average that we've been talking about. That house, 2022, $150. In 2017, five years ago, that house was $112 and some change per square foot. Well, I know what that house looks like because I've inspected hundreds of them. That house looks a lot like this house. This is, this particular house, okay, this house is built for middle-income, middle-class family. That's the market it's geared towards. It's nice, it's substantial, solid, nothing crazy in this house. Eight-foot ceilings, prefinished hardwood floors through the living room, maybe a little carpet in the bedrooms, maybe more prefinished, box cabinets, pretty standard countertops. Just, it's a great house, it's nothing crazy. So this particular one is on Comanche Drive in Bullin Springs. It is 1,600 square feet heated with a two-car garage. That brings it in at $2,176 a square foot. When it was built, if it was built in 2017, $2,176 under roof at $112 per square foot, that house came in about $243,000, so less than $250 still to build that house. The exact same house, if you build it today in this climate, with supply chain shortages, labor out the roof, all the inflation, all the challenges that our builders are looking at today, exact same house, $326,000 based on that average of $150 per square foot. So it's a full, $80,000, a full 1/3 increase, and the only thing different is five years at a time. And that's why I say, when I get asked those questions, are things slowing down? That's what I'm hearing, is are things slowing down? Because we're doing well, but we don't want to, you know, we want to be ready if things start coming down. So I reached out to one of our builders in the community, been working with him for 20 years now, good guy, called him up, I didn't get him, went to voicemail. Then he called me back, and I asked him, I said, the house you build, what did it cost you to build that house five years ago? Now, the house he built looks a lot more like this. It is not the same house as the one before. This is built for a different market. This is going to be nine-foot ceilings with vault, yeah, nine-foot with vaulted ceilings, good solid hardwoods, maybe some custom cabinets, probably a tile shower in the master bathroom. This is a different house. It's built for a different market. So I said, Mr. Contractor, Mr. Contractor, what did it cost you to build that house five years ago? He said, ma'am, we built that house forever for $125 a square foot, $125 a square foot. Five years ago, we were up to about $135 to $140 a square foot to build this house, a house like this. He didn't build this one in particular, but a house of this market, $135.40 five years ago. I said, what's it cost to build that house today? And he said, $215 to $220 all day long, $215 to $220. This, a house that he just finished, like this, 3,000 square feet is what it came in, actually came in 3,003 square feet. At that conservative $215 rate, and it now costs $645,000 to build this house. And that's why I say that folks are, they're optimistic, things are going well. Those numbers of growth look good, but the, kind of the general sentiment out here is, can this keep going? And all the market indicators say that it's doing well. Just like that graph right there that shows that much of this, with all those extra inputs, we still had an increase in permit numbers last year. The demand is still there, and it is still strong. And I expect to bring, when I come back here next year, if I get invited to do a presentation, we'll have graphs that look pretty similar to that. We're just wondering, is it, what's that correction going to look like when it comes? Because we believe that it's got to correct a little bit. Could be because of the interest rates are going to affect the demand. There's a lot of factors in the market. That's why people are, I mean, they're doing well, but they're cautiously optimistic. And I've got one- a house of this market. Hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty cents five years ago. I said, what's it cost to build that house today? And he said, two-fifteen to two-twenty all day long. Two-hundred and fifteen to two-hundred and twenty dollars. This, uh, a house that he just finished, like this, three thousand square feet's what it came in, actually came in, three thousand, three square feet. At that conservative two-fifteen rate, and it now costs six-hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to build this house. And that's why I say that folks are, they're optimistic, things are going well. Those numbers of growth look good, but the, kind of the general sentiment out here is, can this keep going? And, um, all the market indicators say that it's doing well. I, just like that graph right there, that shows that much of this, with all those extra inputs, we still had an increase in permit co- permit numbers last year. The demand is still there, and it is still strong. And I expect to bring, when I come back here next year, if I get invited to do a presentation, we'll have graphs that look pretty similar to that. We're just wondering, is it, uh, what's that correction gonna look like when it comes? Because we believe that it's got to correct a little bit. Could be because of the interest rates are gonna affect the demand. Um, there's a lot of factors in the market. That's why people are, I mean, they're doing well, but they're cautiously optimistic. And I've got one last slide for you, that supports that, uh, idea of growth. Uh, got this from Chris Martin in the planning department. This is our county, of course, with our municipalities highlighted. If you'll notice those, uh, blue spots, those aren't developments yet, but that represents fourteen different tracts of land where individuals are actively working with our planning department to build new neighborhoods of some capacity. Some of them larger than others, but of some capacity, they're working with our planning department right now. And that doesn't represent the ones that have not purchased any permits of any kind, or submitted any sort of site drawings. That's, there's a, a lot of those phone calls Chris's team fields every day. Um, again, I appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight, and, um, if you've got any questions, I'd love to talk to you.
Thank you, Cole. Board, do you have any questions for Cole?
Does this mean we probably have a revow in the near future?
Hmm. That would be another department. I can tell you, we're, uh, in the building inspection department, like I said, we're, we're steady. Um, my guys, I really appreciate them. They tell me they'd rather be busy than bored, and they're plenty busy right now.
Anyone else?
Very informative. Thank you, Cole.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Cole. All right, next, we recognize the county manager, and we're gonna do this amendment to the agenda first, which will be item 7A Shelby Collection Site.
Thank you, Commissioner Gordon. Um, just very quickly, I just have a couple of slides that, um, I've been asked questions by multiple board members, um, about a, a general discussion related to the recycling, uh, collection site that, um, recently closed in Shelby. So I wanted to talk just briefly, a little bit about the background, um, what led to that, uh, that closure, and really an equity adjustment across the county, uh, for household, uh, solid waste handling. I'd remind the board back at your work session, after really, um, quite a bit of time of, of, of conversation and evaluation, uh, looking at things like return on investment and cost, and again, equity, um, uh, the board took action at your work session in February, uh, to close that recycling center, which I would remind you was, is the only one in a municipal boundary. Uh, and at that time, the direction was given to staff to try to accomplish that by April the first. Um, following that, uh, the, the motion, uh, also included an option, uh, to communicate with the city, uh, and offer them, uh, you know, cover the data, explain the reasoning, uh, and offer an opportunity for those, uh, for the city, uh, leadership, city administration, city of Shelby, of course, uh, to take over the operations. So following that, um, that, uh, vote, at your work session, I made contact, communicated those things. Uh, we worked over the next few weeks to, uh, to try to hit that April first deadline. It's budget season, a lot of other moving parts. Clearly, uh, we didn't make it. Uh, so I, uh, uh, asked the board for an additional thirty days, and was granted that, were pleased with that. Again, reached out, uh, to city leadership and reminded them of the imminent deadline, uh, and offered the same options of, uh, you know, permanent closure and reallocation of county resources in a, in a spirit of equity, uh, or for the city to, again, uh, in some way, begin operations. And that would include a potential to the county donating assets, things like compactors and containers and all those type things. Uh, you all already know, but the city owns the land. This was a non-written handshake agreement from some years back, for the county to operate the site on city property. Uh, and then we've moved towards formal closure and communicating that over the last couple of weeks. But generally, the, the decision was made, um, fundamentally, again, because of it being the only county-provided resource in a municipal boundary. Um, and then on top of that, as you'll see momentarily, it is also a, a fairly underutilized asset. There's also been some questions specifically surrounding how the billing for household garbage collection works in Cleveland County. Uh, the first thing that I would say, uh, is on, uh, we have a single collection system, which means that the county tax bills include something, uh, that you can see, uh, here. It's called a recycling fee. Um, and it's on every tax bill in Cleveland County. We have approximately forty-three thousand households. About twenty-five thousand of those are, uh, unincorporated, and about eighteen thousand of those households are incorporated, meaning they're inside a town or municipal boundary. The twenty-five-dollar recycling fee, which is really a bulk household waste fee, um, is, is, is to account for, uh, any citizen in the county, regardless of where they live, being able to take household garbage to the Self-McNeely, which is our MSW landfill, go across the scales. And if the household uh, waste originated from their home, there's never a charge, right? So anyone in the county uh, can, can take, um, household solid waste to Self-McNeely landfill, and if that originated in a non-commercial way from their home, they provide their address, and they're not in any way charged to fee. And that's, that service is available to, again, all citizens. Additionally to that, depending on how you, um, treat your household, uh, waste, there's additional fees. And there's really two different methodologies. There are folks who live in an unincorporated part of the county, and have a contract with Republic, which is the franchised, uh, curbside pickup, uh, company for the county. Um, and there's folks that are in an unincorporated areas without that, uh, contract with Republic. If you do have it, and this is a little bit complicated, so I'll move slowly, if you do have a co- a, a contract with Republic, then you do not pay this additional fifty-three dollars. If you do not have a contract with Republic, then you do pay an additional fifty-three dollars, and that is to compensate and account for using the eight other collection sites that are located around the county. And I'll talk about that more just in a moment. But if you do not have curbside trash pickup in Cleveland County, and you live in an unincorporated area, you pay an additional fifty-three dollars to use those collection sites, plus the twenty-five for bulk household waste. So, and this is a sample tax bill, I know it's hard to see, but the total for those folks is seventy-eight dollars and three cents. For every other household in Cleveland County, if you live in a municipal area with, with municipal curbside pickup, or if you live in an unincorporated area and you contract with Republic, you play a fat, you pay a flat twenty-five dollar fee. And I would point out, there were four-hundred-and-eighteen tons of household solid waste that came across the scales at Self-McNeely landfill last year, that didn't pay a single cent, because it was accounted for under this twenty-five-dollar flat fee. So it's highly utilized, highly utilized. Here's just a map showing where our, uh, collection sites are. We have nine, uh, but the only one that's, again, inside of this municipal boundary and is solely dedicated to recycling is the one in Shelby. Um, and that was, again, what drove the primary conversation as to why that is set up that way, why that's handled that way, especially when we see a, a, a very sharp decline in the, in the, uh, recycling market, meaning that it's, it's at very best cost-neutral. Sometimes there's an inverse relationship, and it costs additional dollars to dispose of recyclables. Um, why, why is that there? And, and how should we handle that? And I think ultimately, that's what motivated the board of commissioners to take a more equitable approach, um, in, uh, moving away from that site in Shelby. Uh, information that was covered with commissioners, as well as with the city, roughly fifty thousand dollars, almost fifty-one thousand dollars annually to operate that site. Most of that's in staffing. Uh, we had about a hundred thousand dollars worth of assets on site, again, containers, compactors, those type things. Um, and then lastly, as I mentioned, uh, th- this site was also heavily under, underutilized. So when we look at our percentage of car counts, only about two percent, uh, go through that site. So the, the, really, the return on investment question of a fifty-one thousand dollar investment, uh, that equates for two percent of our total traffic count, and it's the only one inside of a municipal boundary, those are the things I heard commissioners really deliberating about as you were making your final decision. You can see total hauls and tonnage. Uh, anyway, we analyze the utilization of that asset, it did not appear to be an appropriate return on investment, or, uh, really, uh, have, have an equity interest, uh, compared to other, uh, other townships and cities in the county. So, uh, ultimately, um, that, those were the reasons that the decisions were made. I hope that clears up any miscommunication or confusion on how billing was happened, or why the decision was made. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Do y'all have any questions?
I do, but, you know, our collection sites, we got out of the county with the landfill being the enterprise fund. There's no charge for waste being taken to the landfill. What you're talking about being charged is the hauling fee only, the tipping fee, not for disposal of the trash itself, because the enterprise fund operates off of what they take in already. Is that correct?
Yes, so for the collection sites, there is this annual fee of fifty-eight, or, excuse me, fifty-three dollars and three cents. And that's regardless of tonnage, that's just a collect, that's what funds the personnel, the, the assets and so forth, for the eight collection sites. You're right, and there are no tipping fees associated with that. Uh, if, if you're hauling commercial, or if you're, you know, you're using C and D, or any other things, there are tipping fees associated with it. But for the average unincorporated household that does not have a, uh, a relationship with Republic as a residential curbside hauler, they do pay fifty-three dollars and three cents per year for unlimited access, uh, to those collection sites.
That, that's for the transportation.
That's right.
Or disposal.
All the cost, yes, sir, yeah.
So maybe, so we can expand on that to make sure we're clear. So the landfill and operations out there are, is an enterprise fund?
Correct.
They're paid solely by user fees?
Correct.
Regardless of whether it's this recycling fee, solid waste fee, tipping fees, it's paid for solely by tip, uh, user fees?
That's correct.
There's not one cent of the, the county general tax that goes to the operation of the landfill?
That's correct.
I don't think that was clearly stated last night. There was a misunderstanding of that. So make sure we're clear, from the board of county commissioners and the county manager, there's not one cent of the county general tax that goes into the operation of the landfill.
That's right.
So regardless of where you sit in this county, regardless of where your home is, all county citizens are treated, created equal in relationship to county tax and the operation of the landfill.
That's right.
And any of the convenience sites associated there with that.
That's right. And, and, and the three pathways for billing are those municipal, unincorporated, Republic, or un, or unincorporated, uh, without Republic. And I, and I'll point out, and I know we've talked about it, and as we're certainly in the budget season, we do have a twenty-two million dollar unfunded liability for the closure and the handling of solid waste. I would point out that there are a couple of counties around us, Rutherford County being an example, um, Caldwell, maybe, there's a few other ones in our region that, um, you know, that don't have the, the, the benefit of having an open MSW landfill. And on average, their fees are twenty-five, thirty percent higher than ours, because they become a transfer station. They essentially collect solid waste and have to send it somewhere else, which adds to the cost. And it's, as, as Mr. Farrington just pointed out, with building costs, the cost of bulldozers, the cost of fuel, all of those things drive up, uh, you know, the, the cost of properly handling solid waste, maintaining our permits, uh, uh, you know, doing our environmental monitoring, our, our groundwater monitoring, all of those complexities that often are overlooked, but are critical to public health, public safety. Um, it's a really expensive endeavor, and to your point, statutorily, uh, it has to be financed with user fees. So we regularly, including actively right now, work with our engineering firms to do, uh, financial stability, uh, analysis, to make sure that we're charging adequately, uh, to properly maintain and, and dispose of waste, and shut landfills and cap landfills. Uh, but at the same time, that, that the fees are justified and equitable, and, and we feel good about our structure.
So how many enterprise funds does the city of Shelby have?
I believe four.
So you would, one would think that they'd understand the operation of an enterprise fund. You don't have to answer that. Can you flip, can you flip back to the first slide that you had up there? So it is true that you had more than one conversation with the city about this schedule, and what was going to occur after the vote of the board of commissioners, and what was going to take place with that site?
Yeah, I, I, I would say, um, that the answer, the, the simple answer is yes. There were no formal communications, there were no letters written, um, nothing exchanged to that effect. But, um, on, on several occasions, I made sure to have conversations with city leadership about the board of commissioners' intent to evaluate the site and to move towards closure, and that there was an alternative option that included, uh, you know, uh, the city taking over operations at an approximate annual cost of, of around fifty thousand dollars.
So there were more professional conversations between county leadership and city leadership, more than a brief conversation?
Yeah, I would, I would summarize them all as brief, because they went nowhere, but, but there were-
But there were more than one brief?
There were more than one conversation. That's right.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, if not, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's the Justice Center Construction Manager at Risk, Brian?
So, uh, a total transition to, um, uh, a quick recap of our Justice Center, uh, something we've really been working on now for almost five years, although in the last eighteen months, it's really been accelerated, and the path has really changed. Um, I want to talk just briefly about the background, and I'll, I'll be expeditious with our time. Uh, remind the board of where our budget currently sits and, and our expectations. Uh, that should be a three, not a two, uh, but we'll touch briefly on the schedule, um, share some conceptual site renderings that are fluid. And, and I'd like to point that out, that, uh, both the schematic design and these conceptual sites, uh, depend on topography, depend on civil engineering, there's lots of things that, uh, could impact those, uh, layouts as we move forward. Uh, but finally, what I'd like to share with the board is the process that, um, uh, Commissioner Gordon and Commissioner Weston have participated in with staff to go through a construction manager at risk selection. It's the first time in the history of Cleveland County, we followed this procurement method. Uh, there's the General Statute 143, which governs all, uh, construction activity in North Carolina, uh, really lays out multiple models. And most often, in, in local government, uh, what you experience is a design, bid, build philosophy, which really gives security in the cap amount that, the capex that'll be spent. Uh, the, the construction manager at risk model is, is, is a different model that really brings on a construction consultant early in the process to work with your design team. And it's a cost-plus, uh, an, uh, you know, spending model, cost model, that really helps you offset some of the supply chain and labor shortages we've seen in the market, that often require, um, contractors to, to, to submit a, a bid when it's fixed fee at a significant premium to cover the risk that they're insuring by promising costs that may be two or three years out. So that's why we, we chose this model. Uh, we've worked on it now for the last ninety days, and we're prepared to make a recommendation on a firm, so that we can keep this project moving forward. Very quickly on the background, I won't touch all, all this, other than to say, there has not been a thirty-day span in the last five years that we haven't worked on this project in some way. Um, I've talked a lot about, um, the rethink phase of our, our crisis management plan with React, Rebuild, Rethink. Uh, a lot happened, uh, because of COVID, with jail population, with prioritization, and with a variety of other, um, uh, analyses that, that, that altered the path forward with this Justice Center. But we've ultimately landed, uh, with what we think will be a total of about a hundred and forty million dollars. Of course, that's an estimate. Uh, our building inspector just talked about, uh, cost escalation and changes in supply chain and alternative materials and so forth. Uh, but generally, this is what, this is the, this is the, uh, uh, the, the target that we're shooting for. This will be about a four-hundred-thousand-square-foot facility, a four-hundred-and-fifty-bed jail, uh, which is an additional capacity. Uh, A, it's, it's centrally located, it's co-located, which removes the transportation costs that we are experiencing. On average, we spend about two million dollars more on jail, uh, uh, operations than anyone like us from a, a county benchmark perspective, so we're really excited about that. A, a, a new courthouse, new sheriff's administration space. Um, and as you can see, about fifty-nine million of that, uh, is funded through a state grant that we're incredibly thankful for. Uh, it's really the green light that makes the project possible. Uh, we've got about eighteen million in dedic- undedicated capital that we think we can pay towards this project, and then we expect to borrow about sixty-three million. From a schedule perspective, I'm happy to report on a project this large and this complicated, it's not often that you get to report. Uh, we're slightly ahead of schedule. Uh, we're trekking right along, uh, with a successful adoption of a construction manager at risk. Uh, a partner tonight, we'll be able to move towards final schematic design and get into that design development phase, uh, hopefully in late summer. Uh, but we're, we're, we're optimistic that we can be substantially complete with construction, uh, on a super-complex project with a lot of phasing and a lot of logistics by December of 2025. Just a couple optics here. Uh, again, these are very fluid. Uh, we're still working with each of the stakeholders that will occupy these buildings. We're still working with, uh, the city of Shelby on, on screenings and all those type things. So, so again, this is just, uh, where we are now. This is not necessarily where we totally end up. Uh, but you can see how the, how the site lays. Um, some very quick renderings, uh, from an artistic perspective. Uh, after we look at the floor plan here, you can see it's ultimately gonna be starting below ground level with some secure access, uh, in the courthouse for judicial officers and those folks. Same on the sheriff and detention side with the Sallyport, uh, a transportation between, uh, detention and courthouse, it would be a, a secure tunnel. Um, ultimately, the courthouse will have a shelf floor on the top floor, uh, to account for future growth. We think this is a, uh, you know, a, a century-long fix to justice capital in, in Cleveland County. We're really, really excited about it. Here's just, again, kind of an artistic rendering for what the entrance to the courthouse may look like. Uh, kind of a campus approach with, um, public parking in the front. There'll be two main entrances, one to the court, uh, and then one into the sheriff's office, which will be the middle building there, and that's how you would access jail visitation as well. And so all that to tee up, and I know we've talked about that many, many times, uh, each of your last two Capitol work sessions, uh, we've had a dedicated planning session just for this project, and of our hundred-and-sixty-two million dollars of active capital right now, this is a hundred and forty million of it, so it's getting a lot of priority. Uh, but I, I, I want to talk just briefly about this C-MOR evaluation process. Uh, I'd remind the board that, uh, back in January, we I'd remind the board that back in January, we awarded a contract to Mosley Architects to be the design engineering architectural firm. We went through a very similar RFQ process with that, with those folks, and ultimately narrowed that group down to three and felt like they were the most qualified. Very similar with this Construction Manager at Risk. Our staff drafted an RFQ. We're trying to pick a partner based on qualifications. There's specific guidance in the statutes. Mini Brooks Act actually is the the reference that talks about, it's not a fee-based approach. It's a qualifications-based approach. So over the last sixteen to ninety days, we've done that with our steering committee. And I simply use this to point out, it's a highly regulated process, that even though you're making your selection based off of qualifications, it's not just a preferred qualified. It's a very quantified qualification, meaning you have to identify the things that you believe make a specific vendor relationship stick out, what makes them better, what makes, what gives them a competitive advantage, why do you prioritize them higher? And then you have to go through a very, a very scientific approach that can that can measure that and quantify and articulate it so that you can explain it. Choose based on locality and closeness to the county isn't something that can be considered. And ultimately, after you make your submission and your determination within twelve months of beginning construction or at the completion, there's reporting requirements to the North Carolina Secretary of Administration outlining the entire process. It's also all public record. So we we just take the the process very, and the integrity of that process very, very seriously, especially when you're talking about, A, the first time that counties followed this model, and B, a project of this size and scope. So of all the proposals that were submitted, our first phase was a, you know, asking each of the firms that were interested to submit a written proposal as to their qualifications. We looked at things like bonding. We looked at things like financial security and so forth. And and ultimately, we narrowed it down to these three firms. Two of the three were joint ventures. We did reference checks on all of them. We evaluated the size of their company to what what the size of our project was. And we ended up with, you know, Phase One, which was a written evaluation versus Phase Two, which was about a four-hour interview process last week. And we totaled the score from the two rounds. And as you can see there in the middle, Yates Metcon was the top-performing firm at thirteen hundred and forty-six points. They already have an existing construction endeavor and joint venture going on inside the county of similar magnitude. They've done a tremendous amount of work around the state and university systems. One of the most complex avenues of this project is that we're building a four hundred thousand square foot, hundred and forty million dollar asset around a building that has to continue to operate. The courthouse is a critical pathway. Communications is in that building. There's a variety of things that cannot be impeded. And that was a very serious consideration that our team took into place. And so after, after, again, many, many hours, many tough conversations, a lot of evaluation, the recommendation is to authorize the board chair and the county manager and staff to begin to negotiate and finalize all documents required to retain Yates Metcon, their joint venture, as the Construction Manager at Risk for Cleveland County Justice Center. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, do you have questions or comments for Brian? Brian, do you have anything you'd like to add? I mean, you and I sit through this.
Yes, the most enduring part of this was the first batch they sent us when it was all on paper. We, all four companies sent us forty to fifty pages. And I'd prefer talking to somebody any day than reading. But anyway, we got through that part fine and narrowed it down. And then the afternoon that we had the interviews, Yates Metcon was just head and shoulders above the others. So I feel like they're the best, best team.
I would echo that. I think that any of the three up there was more than capable of doing and building us, building that would last many decades. But without question, this group distanced themselves from the other two. And that gets us to this recommendation.
So do we need a?
Yeah, any other comments or questions from you guys? If not, then yeah, we'll need, we need a motion to, yes, sir, we need a motion to accept.
We accept on the recommendation of the commissioners that were involved in the planning there.
Second.
Is there any other discussion or questions? If not, all is a favor indicated by Sanai. Anyone opposed? So motion carries. We'll move forward with Yates and Metcon. Brian, you're up again for the EMS transition plan.
So again, something that's that's a critical path and the basic service delivery that Cleveland County offers to its community, emergency medical services, is something that's been a priority to the board and to staff for some time. We engaged in a public safety strategic plan draft about about a year ago and and heard recommendations at your work session on how to enhance that system. I think the approach through this transition is that all things in the spirit of continuous improvement have a good, a better, and a best. I think our EMS system has been adequate and performing at a high level with a lot of really good people for some time. But the question of how can we do it better? How can we offset an aging community? How can we offset an increase in service demand? And ultimately improve response times and improve patient care through uniformity and consistency and predictability is the question we were trying to answer. So I want to start with just a little bit of background. After the commissioners made the decision to move to a centrally administered EMS system in Cleveland County, staff's task was to begin to really draft and articulate what a transition plan may look like. We took a phased approach. And I'll talk briefly about that. And then lastly, again, oftentimes, it's most effective to start with the end goal and then back into the process into the system from a systemic approach perspective. And operational enhancement is what we're trying to accomplish. We have to go through these other periods before we get there. But I want to close with just sharing where we're at in enhancing the system and what we still have left to do. So again, at your work session in February, this vote came to centrally, begin centrally administering EMS. The task, the board tasked, the board chair and the manager with beginning to consolidate under this umbrella of county corporate oversight with a with a focus on improving patient care through response time and training. I mentioned that we drafted a transition plan. The transition plan was very, very simple. It covered basically a year with the goal of completing the phased transition in a time that would be appropriate to report back to the commissioners at your next year work session. You took action in February of twenty-two. We will be prepared to show you the impact of your decision in February of twenty-three. Phase one was all about communication and reaction. Phase two was about personnel recognizing that we would have to really develop our staffing model to encompass the the impact on the department operationally. Phase three, capital and equipment, what needs to be acquired, how do we acquire it? How do we do it in a timely fashion to make sure that we're adequate there? And then phase four, which if you if you if you add the math from February twenty-fifth, gets you to about July first, that's when we kind of have a break even of saying we need to have system equalization through phases one, two, and three. And then as we approach the new budget year and the new fiscal year, we start adding to the system in a very strategic way to start to to show those patient care improvements. One of the things that was identified at your work session is that only about seventy-five percent of our county is reachable from our current base locations within that required best practice eight-minute response time. We want to get that to ninety percent. That's an example of system enhancement. We also know that we want to start shifting towards twelve-hour coverage, peak shaving, daytime focus. That's another area for improvement and enhancement. So our goals, to make sure that we're measuring our level of effectiveness and implementation. Number one, we want to have seamless transition. Number two, we want to communicate at a high level. Number three, this this concept of system equalization with personnel and equipment. Number four, really marries well with that. But three and four are about equalization, and then five is enhancement. So I'll lay through those pretty quickly. Phase one, we've, both Commissioner Gordon, Tommy McNeely, our EMS director, and I have met with each of the rescue squad's leadership on multiple occasions since this decision. We've had our first official press release in March, and we've, as we met with the leadership, again, multiple times with each unit, we've really tried to be clear in our communication that we have a commitment to hiring all eligible personnel. And eligibility is defined as folks who are eligible for hire by the county. And we've committed on that hire date to pay them at or more than what they were making there, plus they would receive, obviously, county, local government benefits. We've also shared an intent to make considerations on their capital and equipment to meet the county needs. But also, we want to better understand what their long-term needs are, too. And I'll talk more about that momentarily. As you can see, Upper Cleveland ceased operations for pre-hospitalization ambulance care on March the thirty-first. Shelby Rescue is slated to run their last shift on, beginning at six P M. on May the twenty-first and ceasing on, at six A M. on May the twenty-second. And Kings Mountain will run through June thirtieth and transition on July first. Phase two was all about people. We've, we've really put a lot of effort into this, and we see this as one of the the most critical phases of the plan. To this point, we failed four hiring events, all at the American River Cross. Each, each one being unique to the specific rescue squad. You can see the dates. And at the end of the day, we've ended up hiring over thirty people, eighteen full-time and fifteen part-time folks. And I'm very proud to to report that we are fully staffed at this point and prepared for full transition. Phase three is about capital and equipment. And again, what I said earlier about part of, part of this phase is understanding what the long-term desires and needs of each of those autonomous nonprofit corporate boards are. Each of our rescue squads, although they worked hand in hand in parallel with the county through a franchise, they are independent nonprofit organizations with autonomous corporate boards. Here's an example of Shelby Rescue. We have met with them and been able to gain some traction. You can see the assets that Shelby Rescue has. And their approach and what their board has voted on is an agreement to transition all assets and equipment that Shelby Rescue is responsible for, which includes building and land and rolling stock and radios and stretchers and life packs. Altogether, the cumulative value of those assets is about two and a quarter million dollars. And their request is to transfer title of each of those assets to the county for an amount equal to or less than one point one and a quarter million dollars, which is about fifty-five cents on the dollar. That that amount was arrived at because that's the the amount that they have in links. That's the note on primarily their building. And they're, they have two, they have a note on two pieces of rolling stock. Now, we have had simultaneous meetings with both the Upper Cleveland Rescue Squad, their board, and Kings Mountain Rescue Squad. Neither of them have the same level of urgency, and we're working to better understand what their long-term needs are. The Shelby approach of seamless consolidation and transitioning to the county may not be the one-size-fits-all approach for the other two rescue squads. But we are having high levels of communication. Each of those units are putting together a detailed asset ledger with assumed values, and we'll be able to pick up those conversations about transition in a couple of weeks. But it is in a good spot. I think there's mutual understanding on both sides and shared goals. But ultimately, it may end up a little bit different depending on on what their desired long-term plans are. Phase four, this is where we start trying to get better. This is where system equalization is good. The new system's in place. We're rolling. And and our, and our commitment to our community is to enhance the service. We've already been able to put a full transport unit in Kaser. The first day that we staffed that base actually was with a QRV. I've shared with each of our commissioners, we had a pediatric seizure on that day. We were on-site in less than four minutes. Same, really the same truth. The first day, we had a full ambulance. We had a similar call in the Northern End. And these are places that would have been fifteen, twenty-minute response times before that base was 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 in place and staffed. We're also under contract for a small base in in Lawndale. We think that we'll close on that in mid-May. We will originally staff it with, which is with a QRV, which is an ambulance. It's a fully-staffed ambulance. The difference is it only has one person. But by July first, we'll have a full ambulance there. That will be a fully capable transport unit. There's some building modifications and building enhancements that have to happen, sprinkler systems and a few other things, employee quarters that 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 we have to get done between now and then. But ultimately, that will be a, again, a fully-staffed ambulance. In the, in the summer and fall, that's when we'll be adding our first twelve-hour peak shaving units, two to Shelby, two to Kings Mountain. And those will be originally dedicated from nine A M. to nine P M. or something, you know, ten to ten. We're going to really follow the data and see when those, when the peak volume of of demands coming in and staff those trucks to mirror that. And then from that point until February of twenty-three, we'll really monitor our impact, adjust as necessary, and be prepared to report back to the Board of Commissioners on the fruits of that decision that you made in February of twenty twenty-two. As I evaluate our goals through the transition plan to this point, I really feel like we're exactly where we need to be. Certainly, this is a complicated, really multifaceted transition that involves a lot of moving parts. But but I can, the goals, one of the goals that we didn't share in this PowerPoint, but I did commit to the commissioners in your work sessions, this is also cost neutral. So you're doing all these things that I think will have a significant impact on response time and on coverage in a way that's cost neutral to your taxpayers. And that concludes the update. I just wanted to share kind of where we were, where we're going. And I also want to ask the board to authorize county staff to finalize, consider finalizing the transaction and closing documents with Shelby Rescue Squad at an amount equal to or less than one and a quarter million dollars. And I'll remind you, that's for assets that are significantly more valuable than that. And these are one-time procurements. And when I say cost neutral, that obviously has to be looked at over a two- to three-year period as we recoup this investment through fees.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Brian or any comments?
I'd like to thank the staff for, Tommy, for all the work that that has took to get us to where we are. And I feel like we're going in the right direction. And sometime down the road, we're going to really go back, be able to look back and see how how good a thing this was.
Brian, can you go over the QRV thing with me again?
Yes.
Like, it's one, two, or how many people?
Yeah, so so three different models, right? So there's a full-blown ambulance, which is two people and a and a transport unit. And those two people, Tommy here, he can, he can get much more sophisticated than I can. But if it's an ALS unit, you typically have a medic and and something less than a medic, right? Because we're trying to get a full-blown paramedic on his, on his mini, there's limited supply, because that's the highest level of certification. You can staff an ALS truck with an advanced, advanced EMT, too. But so so there's full transport, which is two people and an ambulance. There's two types of QRVs. There's a one paramedic, and that would be one of our most advanced paramedics. Typically, they have automatic CPR, so they are able to arrive on scene, begin patient care, and and very quickly, we also dispatch an administrator, a sergeant, a lieutenant, a captain to also go to that scene in case they needed to load into the truck or transport. But the goal is to get somebody on scene as quickly as possible and begin patient care, make sure airways are clean, CPR is began and so forth. But that is one model of a QRV, which is an ambulance, no different than any other ambulance, but it only has one person on it. So transport is more difficult. You can't have a medic in the back and a driver. And then there's a QRV, which is more like a, an SUV or a pickup truck. And typically, our administrators are in those, but they're fully, they're fully equipped, too, and can do most of the same medical procedures in the field as as anyone else. They just don't have transport, patient transport capacity. And it's a, it's a proven model, recommended national best practice for QRVs. Cut your, cut your cost in half, allows you to put more assets in more places and have more coverage.
Okay.
Tommy, anything you'd say that I didn't?
Which one would be in Lawndale?
Yeah, what's the plans for Lawndale and Kaser?
Yeah, so originally, because of limitations in the base, there'll be a QRV in Lawndale. Because it's a, it's a one-space area. We have to add a R-eighteen pair? R-fourteen sprinkler system and a few other things in order to put two people there. Once we can house two people there by July first, that'll be a full-blown ambulance.
So if till then, if a call comes in and that person needs help, where would that?
Closest available unit.
So it could be anywhere.
It would be closest available or the supervisor. I mean, it could be, it could be a variety. I mean, we studied from November, help me, Tommy, from November until March. We have a QRV at our Waco base. And we studied all calls between November and March where that was dispatched. And there was a second unit on scene in less than six minutes. Most of the time in less than four, but in less than six, as an average, there were some that were elongated. And and generally, generally, there's, by the time the QRV arrives, goes in, assesses patient needs, begins CPR, does whatever it needs to do, within six minutes, that person's there. So to think. So to think that there's any delay in patient care or transport, I don't believe is, is, is a concern.
Would that person start as soon as the other one went, or wait for that one to call?
It's, I'm a.
Or is it just according to what the call would be?
So if it's a, if it's a higher severity of call, then you get, you get, you know, the resources going as quickly as you can. Again, Tommy's here, I, I want to lean on him a little bit, but, but generally.
They're, they're all dispatched at the same time.
So the closest one would get there, but somebody's coming right behind them, that's what I'm.
And you already have a responder as well.
Yes, yes. Again, depending on the severity of call, if it's a, if it's an alpha-level call, and, and there may not, that, that may not need to happen, but our dispatchers are highly-trained and they have medical protocol, and they really spend a lot of time making sure that they understand what they're dispatching to. I think the important thing about the Lawndale base is it's the first time maybe ever, certainly in a long time, that there's been a Monday through Friday dedicated medical unit in Lawndale. And at this point, for the Northern End, we have a truck in Polkville, full ambulance, full truck in Kaser, QRV, which is an ambulance in Lawndale, and a full truck in Bellwood. So that's four dedicated 24/7 medical units to the Northern End of Cleveland County.
So that, that's more than we've ever had.
Ever. By law.
Yeah, and rescue up there only worked so many days, is that correct?
Upper Cleveland Rescue?
Upper Cleveland, they didn't.
Well, I can only speak from my short history, but.
I mean, from what we knew, yeah.
Their franchise, I believe, said Friday through Sunday. Is that correct?
Okay.
And, and that was hit or miss.
Any other questions?
And, and the Upper, the Upper Cleveland, they have ceased, so we are totally, what you're saying now is what's happening today.
Yes, as a matter of fact, over the weekend, Commissioner Whitstein, just coincidentally, the two exist, the two remaining rescue squads, Shelby Rescue and Kings Mountain Rescue, who are, again, great partners, valued partners, and we've relied on that system with them for a long, long time, but for coincidental reasons, neither of those agencies staffed the truck, and so Cleveland County EMS handled the entire system, and it was seamless.
Any other questions?
I would echo Ronnie's comment, Chief Whitstone, Commissioner Whitstone's comments. Seeing this firsthand, and the work that Brian and his staff, and Tommy, definitely his staff, to, to work through this transition has been a lot of stressful and long hours, and that is great, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
So with that, you have the action slide here, so we're looking for a, a motion and a second to move forward, finalize all the transactions necessary in closing documents to acquire the assets from Shelby Rescue and for an amount not to exceed 1.25 million.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor will indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you, Brian, thank you, Tommy. Next item on the agenda is board appointments. We have one for the night, right? So Madam Chair, I mean, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chair, thank you. We have one board appointment, it's for the Cleveland County Historic Preservation Commission. You have the list of applicants in front of you. You will need to appoint one person for a four-year term set, set to expire June 30th, 2026. This is one of those boards that has specifications that you have to have to serve, so people on the list have been vetted by staff, have been cleared by Chris, meet all the requirements needed to serve, and I've gotten the approval on staff's end.
I have known David for a few years now, and he has moved to this area and restored a beautiful old home that I rode by just about every day of my life, because it was in the area where I grew up. I always thought it was a beautiful old home. He's restored it and done a great job. He's in the middle of restoring buildings in downtown Kings Mountain. He has a restoration business to restore old windows for, for houses, so I feel like he's a perfect choice to sit on this Cleveland County Historic Preservation Committee.
That's a motion.
That's a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second, David Stone.
All right, all those in favor will indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next, any commissioners do? You guys have anything you'd like to report?
Ronnie and I went over to the new community center. Dr. Littlejohn and his church got, got a real good thing going over there that's going to help the community for our, their medical needs.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Paulus and I, we attended the Division 13, 15 for the State Association this week, and they were very informative. We've talked a little bit about it, but they're going to try to get it started back up. That's the first one they've had in more than a whole year.
They've got three years.
Anybody else?
I have a couple items I'd like to talk briefly about, that things have been working, it's probably of interest of several either in the room or viewing. First of all, we're closing in on, we have a fair lease that will extend the lease of the fair for 10 years, and, and that is a statutory limit that the county can enter into, and there's an opportunity to renew that lease. Brian, you can add anything if I don't communicate this properly. That will be on the agenda before the Board of Commissioners on June 7th to finalize the county side of that. I think there's been some interest around that, and all plannings taking place to have a county fair this year, and the number loses my mind. It's 98th, does anybody remember?
24, we're at 100.
98th. So this will be the 98th Cleveland County Fair, and we're looking forward to having the county fair back after two years due to COVID, and I think putting this, getting this lease done will be very advantageous to the fair and the fair association, and I think Jason's on that board as well, and he's done a lot of work, and as the fair board has, and want to thank them for the work to move this along. Also, I had a couple phone calls from members of the American Legion World Series planning, and they asked that we announced that the plans are being made for the World Series this, later this summer. As you all know, this is an annual event. You might have saw on the news from WBTV and through some other social media outlets, Josh Turner will be at the seventh inning stretch, which will occur on August the 6th, I believe that's a Saturday night. And then, I'm not sure if this has been announced, was on the social media as well, but the Army's Golden Knights will be here on championship night, that's the parachute group, and they will have a presentation, and they will do their normal show, and that will be on championship night, which will be Tuesday, August the 6th. So if you're interested in baseball, support the American Legion and our veterans, the young kids playing baseball, those are some, some events for you, and we look forward to seeing those here. So with that, that's all. So staff, do you guys have anything?
Actually, I do. Commissioners, this is on your calendar, but for the last 70 years, the first Thursday in May is always the National Day of Prayer, so the chambers will be open this Thursday from 12:15 to 12:45 for viewers at home who are watching and, and hearing. So this will be open for fellowship, for prayer, whatever you're comfortable with. So we'll be open in here, you don't have to call an RSVP, you can just show up, 12:15 to 12:45 on Thursday.
All right, if there's nothing else, I think this is the typo here, so the next meeting will be May 17th, right? This says May 3rd.
Yes, I'm sorry, May 17th.
So, so everyone, the next meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held here in the Commissioners' Chambers on Tuesday, May 17th at 6:00 PM. With that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Does that move?
All right, all in favor?